Okay, report some staff.
Okay, so in front of you, I did not change the month, but it is December twenty twenty-four, Georgia. So we ended the year processing thirty thousand four hundred and sixty-seven calls total. That was about, I think we were about sixty below what we were last year. So we were kind of out on the mark. We issued twelve addresses in December and we activated the EOC once and we had a tornado watch of all things at the end of December. We attended the AEM Winter Workshop and ACCA Leadership Conference. We hosted Cleveland, Leadership Cleveland. The big thing that we did in December is we did a winter weather communication drill with our staff. So we took down the, took down the communication and worked through what would we do in a scenario of that. And so that's always fun for us. We like to drill and do the exercise. So other than that, it was, we had a lot of vacation requests off in December and actually our call volume was, we only processed nineteen hundred and two calls. So that's kind of, kind of a slow month for us. So.
Questions, Crystal?
Um, Brian, which bill is coming out yet?
How's your life coming?
About half done.
You did do a store floor on that, didn't you? He said he brought the clips on and he had the cord of them that was breaking off. He might not tell you, but at the end, there's a little thing that you attach to and they get fractured. He must, he must not have had none, but he said he had the cord and he was supposed to pick them up today and finish up.
They almost just drive off, really. They brittle.
Yeah.
Anything?
No reports, sir.
Any other business?
I'm making my new agreement.
I say go.
All in favor? All right, five calls. Call meeting at order. Really called with cotton?
Here.
Really?
There.
Hendricks?
There.
Truett?
Here.
Number four. Well, it's all staying in place at least. Attention, salute pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, come to you, Dave, just thanking you for another day of life. Father, thank you for keeping him safe. We just ask for wisdom in this meeting as we serve our citizens. Just be with us, guide our steps. We ask this in Jesus' name, amen. All right, does everybody have the justice around the stage? Comments from citizens, uh, we had two down for the night, but I think weather disrupted their plans. Comments from officials or board members, Tanya?
I'm good. Do y'all want to talk to me about anything? I was gonna take a picture of you first.
Chair of your first speech, too.
Well, I mean.
You must look after it, look like we're doing it.
No, no, we're like doing it.
Any bid openings that, awards and presentations? No scheduled public hearings? Okay, the consent agenda, uh, it has passed absent number four. So we have a motion to accept it within a genuine minus. I make the motion with acceptance, within a genuine, except most, uh, number four, would you say?
Yes, I'll say so.
Any discussion?
Is this time to discuss what you had questions about?
No, it's gonna be, let's move to the business.
All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Number four will be removed to new business.
WD, yes, sir.
Yes. New business, economic board member appointments. And assuming we have to read this entire, could you go ahead and show them?
I'll take care of it, sir. New business item A, whereas there is a need to establish an economic development board, whereas Senator Price has requested to have draft legislation with the redirected tax language and without, as well as a draft commission resolution that contains the actual language from the legislation in it, both with and without the redirected tax language in it. Whereas pursuant to twenty twenty-three code of Alabama Title forty-five, Chapter fifteen, Article twenty-four, Part four, Section forty-five dash fifteen dash two forty-three.
Go for it. This is one that we didn't bring up last month. So I rolled over under D business.
This is different.
This is different.
This is a brand new one.
Can someone give Tanya a half day?
I don't, I don't talk with her.
Oh, this is the same one.
Last month, the resolution was to support the introduction of legislation. The reason for the new one is Senator Price has asked to actually have the resolution that includes all the language in it. A, Section one, pursuant to the Constitution of Alabama of nineteen oh-one, there is created and established Cleveland County Economic Development Authority, heretofore known as the Authority. On the first day of the first month following the effective date of this act, the Authority shall be composed of eleven members who are residents and qualified electors of the county and shall be appointed as follows. One, the county commissioners from District three and the municipality of Edwardsville shall each appoint one member for an initial term of one year. The county commissioner from District two and four and the municipality of Ramberg shall each appoint one member for an initial term of two years. The county commissioners from District one and the chairman of the county commission and the municipalities of Haplin and Fruithurst shall each appoint one member for an initial term of three years. Four, a consensus of the state legislative delegation of the county shall appoint two members for an initial terms of four years. Thereafter, successor members shall likewise be appointed for terms of four years. The Authority shall hold an organizational meeting within thirty days of the passage of this act, at which the Authority shall elect a chair and vice chair by majority vote of the members present and voting at the meeting. Thereafter, the Authority shall meet at least quarterly or upon request of two-thirds of the members of the Authority and file with the chair of the Authority stating a need for a special meeting. Members of the Authority shall serve without compensation, but they shall be entitled to reimbursement from funds of the Authority for their actual unnecessary expenses incurred in the performance of their actual duties. Being one, the Authority may select a formal name for the council. The Authority shall have the authority to negotiate for the county on all industrial and economic development matters. The council shall formulate and implement plans to promote and foster the industrial development and economic growth of all areas of Cleveland County and any incorporated municipalities located within the county. The council shall be entitled to all the powers, rights, privileges, exemptions, immunities, and authority provided by the general laws of Alabama to local industrial development authorities, including but not limited to abating of taxes, issuance of bonds, acquisition, enlargement, improvement, replacement, ownership, leasing, selling, and disposing of properties, to the end that the council may be able to promote the creation of jobs and develop commerce and trade within the county and the state. Subsection two, the headquarters office of the Authority shall be located in Cleveland County. At the first board meeting in January of each year, the board of directors by majority vote shall elect a chair, vice chair, secretary, and treasurer, who shall hold office until their successors have likewise been elected. The Authority may adopt vital laws to regulate and administer the day-to-day business of the Cleveland County Economic Development Authority. Subsection three, the Authority may employ such personnel as it deems necessary to carry out its duties and purposes. Personnel employed by the Authority may participate in the employees' retirement system in Alabama like other employees of the county and may purchase prior service credit in the employees' retirement system for service rendered in Cleveland County Economic Development under the applicable laws, rules, and regulations of the Employees Retirement, Employees Retirement System. C, the Authority, as herein provided, may be financially supported by revenues from the tobacco tax authorized and whatever source derived as appropriated to the Authority by a municipal governing body, the county commission, legislature, or private entity. Therefore, the Cleveland County Commission approves sending this resolution to the local legislature.
I make the motion for further? Any discussion?
Yeah. Could we have Tanya give us her opinion?
Okay, so yes, Senator Price did ask for us to go ahead and pass this with the full language, but, and I apologize that maybe I did not tell the right people this, but Section C has been removed from this legislation. And discussions were had with Senator Price and Representative Robertson about that. So the Section C is.
While I make my amendment that we've removed, Section C could be legal.
Three C.
Did you second it, Terry?
No.
Who seconded it?
Which section are you talking about?
C.
The, the financial support.
Just, just the C portion, not the whole thing.
Our, our state representative opposed that legisla-, that, that language.
That's gonna be my question.
Well, if you look back in the first paragraph, it says Senator Price requested a draft with the tax language and without it, as well as a draft resolution that contains the actual language with and without the tax language. So as it's read, it can be fine, just.
Okay.
Section C would be removed to take out the tax language.
Right.
And that gives the legislature of the Authority to go forward without Section C.
Okay.
So I understand that.
So go as is.
It'll pass two versions?
No, sir, it can go as is, because they, all they had to do is take out Section C.
Yeah.
How do we tell them to take C out if we go ahead and pass the whole thing?
Section C is the tax language, the redirected tax language. It's the only portion of the legislation that has the actual redirect.
They know, he knows to take it out already.
Okay, well, we're voting and then it's in there.
No.
I think we're going back to the first paragraph.
But the first paragraph says with and without. You could leave it in or leave it out.
Well, I understand that, but I'm just saying, what we're voting on is with it in there, which I'm not favorable.
But I thought we just decided to take out?
You can do it either way. The first paragraph says that they wanted to see it with and without.
So you guys are two votes.
All you can do, we can amend the first paragraph to say with or without the redirected tax language of subsection C.
So then we're in favor of the, of the amendment without three C?
If, if the legislature decides they want to go forward with the redirected tax language, which my understanding is they're not going to.
Why don't we just take it out?
Did Senator Price ask for it just without or both ways?
Hey, so Senator Price asked for it both ways. The conversations have been had since that discussion and he knows that it is, it is good for me.
I represent it as not favorable.
Well, then you can remove the first paragraph and subsection C.
I think it needs to be passed the way it's going to be, like Terry said. It's gonna be taken out.
We can remove the first paragraph that asks about with and without.
Again, my apologies.
And remove subsection C.
Okay, then you have to, the entire first paragraph is going to represent Senator Price.
Whereas Senator Price has requested.
Make the motion that we take out the first paragraph, amend the first paragraph and C.
Three C.
Huh?
Three C.
It's just C.
C.
Yeah. Because you have Sections A, B, and C.
You okay, man?
Okay. Any discussion on that now?
Have you talked to Price about whether he could advertise this or?
Chad actually is the one that's going, Representative Robertson is the one that will introduce it and he, he has a copy of it. And, and he should have already submitted it to the legislative.
But we are gonna advertise it, right?
Once we get.
Yes.
As the bill.
Yes.
Okay. All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Push your passes out of the minutes.
Justin, is that, that second paragraph where Senator Price, the whole paragraph gone?
Okay, new business on B. Whereas Commissioner Mark Truett has expressed his concerns with the current speed limit on County Route eighty-one, whereas County Route eighty-one is a narrow road and reducing the speed limit to thirty-five miles per hour may lead to potential accidents recurring. Therefore, the Cleveland County Commission agrees to reduce the speed limit on County Route eighty-one to thirty-five miles per hour.
Make the motion.
Time's up.
I mean.
With that exception.
I do have additional comment. Uh, the north end of that road, I had measured it fourteen, fourteen and a half feet. When I went on down Patch County Road two, the south end of County Route eighty-one sat down about eleven feet. So very narrow on the south end. If we do this, we'll need to make sure and mark the whole thing. But if, if fourteen's bad, it looks even more, so.
I think we're opening up County Warrants here. I would like to do some research on the speed limit in the county, because from my understanding, talking to the engineer, there's, it's, it's sort of in mind that the speed limit in the county is forty miles an hour unless otherwise posted. So if you want to just post one road, I think that needs to be between you and the commission, because what's gonna happen is, it's, it's something to sign, I think, will make a bit of difference. So I think what we need to do is, is I think we need to make the citizens of Cleveland County more aware of it by maybe posting it more on our new website and letting people know what the speed limit is. I think we'd get more bang for our buck, because I think we'd get into stuff like this that's gonna open up County Warrants. That's my opinion. But what is our understanding of Cleveland County?
Is that, that, that the speed limit is forty miles per hour unless otherwise posted?
So, I mean, is it, is it, are they running forty miles an hour down through there or eighty?
They didn't say it was forty, but.
I know, but I'm just asking. Because what I see is, as you ride down these narrow county roads, people, I mean, you go by them, it moves your car. Go out there on sixty-six foot down on Shepherd Hill. I'm telling you, it's dangerous to even try to get out in these county roads. And I know police officers can't be all over the place. I, I think the younger guys that we got now are writing more tickets than, than we used to have. And I think that's a set of presence more that we might, I'm just saying, the money that we have needs to work towards making the county more aware than working on one road.
It, I mean, this has come up before. We've had residents come wanting roads changed and the president's in the past has always been it, we've never done it. It, it is forty mile an hour, unless it's otherwise posted, but it also goes through the condition of the road. As I said, all those conditions allow.
What I would like to say is of this, is to the discretion of the engineer and the district commissioner that wants to get it done. I mean, to come in and do a resolution every time, if you go down that road so bad, you feel like the safety of five miles an hour being posted is gonna save a lot, I understand. But I think letting the citizens of Cleveland County maybe more posted, you know, make it, make people more aware, you know, because a lot of that, well, there's a lot of county roads don't even have a stop sign, at most.
Well, if they ain't got stop sign, they know about it. But I mean, all the, the paved roads are all posted. Every paved road we've got, unless the signs went missing, but every paved road is posted.
Okay.
I thought I read where the state mandated forty-five on paved roads and thirty-five on dirt roads.
So that's a little bit of, that's a little bit of my confusion there. If you look at the County Road Design Manual from the state, it says forty-five miles per hour and thirty-five. You look at Leah's website, it says forty-five miles per hour and thirty-five.
And what State Truett told me was if it's two lane, it's fifty-five, Mr. Owen. Four lane is sixty-five, as long as it's posted that way. It can be less, it's not gonna be more. But he said all two lanes is fifty-five. If it's four lane, sixty-five unless otherwise posted. Do you understand, Mr. Owen?
So here's, so here's what I found here. This is where I, I wanted to make sure I got a good clear understanding. I got two sites that say forty-five. But then I've got, call it historical information, people that's been working here for forty years, everybody that I've talked to, my guys, forty miles per hour is what it's always been. But I haven't been able to find that forty mile an hour.
Since it contradicts the state slightly.
I would like to change this resolution, if you want to do this, if the other commissioner agrees. I would like to amend it that we said the mile, the speed limit unless otherwise noted, forty miles an hour throughout the county. I mean, that way, I, I, I want to do something that's gonna make it clean throughout the county. I don't want to have to all of a sudden start every month, changing each road here and a road there to fifteen miles an hour, for me. I'm going to assume that's probably what happened decades ago. Exactly what happened.
I just can't find it.
And you just, this resolution's been lost. It's true.
I'm not comfortable treating County Route eighty-one the same as County Route forty-nine. It's clearly twenty-four, twenty-five feet wide versus eleven feet wide. This one should be treated like a one-lane dirt road as far as the speed goes. But if.
I'm just trying to come up with a way to make us a point. Wait up right now, we don't understand. Nobody can tell us what the speed limit, the set speed limit for here.
Why don't we talk to a judge that enforces these tickets and see what the judge says? If the judge says forty mile an hour, then it's forty mile an hour. And back to what you was talking about, the commissioner and the engineer, they can't set law. This stuff can go before a judge, so you can't do that, am I right?
Correct.
Okay.
Now, if we have the sources that Leah has stated that Leah and state code refers to forty-five and thirty-five, which is what I'm familiar with, then the county can agree to comply with that and apply those across the board, which then we can vote at thirty-five.
It's paved. It's as wide as a dirt road is paved.
Mr. Agent?
I agree with Commissioner Owen telling me we opened County Warrants and I get calls all the time about this. And if we pass this, every time I get a call, I'm ringing it to the commission.
And we'll have to vote on it.
I've had them in the past, so it is really, um, caused some issues, because I've had it, you know, them ask me to change some of the speed limits on my roads.
Can you, can you, you want to go talk to the judge about it? And we'll just table it to next week, see what this is.
That's fine.
Is that motion table?
Motion table. I mean, I understand what you're saying, but I understand, we need to make something. I think it needs to be uniform, not just start picking, you know, if it's around the school or something like that. I mean, there's a lot of different ones. We need to come up, if we are gonna do something, we need to come up with a program. This is what we're gonna do.
I think we can make all eleven-foot wide roads twenty-five, if we're setting them in. But.
And that's what I'm saying, what you just said, all. I don't want to start saying County Road two, County Road four.
Well, it's clearly not the same as forty-nine. Go ahead, Terry.
I mean, without the sheriffs on board, it ain't gonna matter if you posted ten. And I don't know that we got the manpower to seven, to eight, to nine, to ten. But once the video gets out, if we pass the rest of the day, we'll have to get ten calls next week about the road.
Okay, so there's a motion, a second on the, it's a table. All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Okay. New business C. Whereas the Secure Rural Schools Reauthorization Act will ensure that rural counties like Cleveland County continue to receive necessary funding for vital local services, including education, infrastructure, conservation, and public safety. Whereas enactment of a sustainable long-term program to share revenues generated from the management of designated federal lands with forest counties and schools will ensure that students receive essential education services. And rural communities have critical funding for roads, conservation projects, search and rescue missions, and fire prevention programs. Whereas barring a long-term solution, SRS will continue to be subject to the annual appropriation cycle. And the expiration of SRS will create budgetary shortfalls for Cleveland County. This will be year twenty-four and twenty-five, Cleveland County received approximately one hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars each year. Whereas HR fifty-thirty, Secure Rural Schools Reauthorization Act and its companion bill, S twenty-five eighty-one, was introduced in the House on July twenty-seventh, twenty-three. Twenty-five eighty-one passed the full Senate on November fourteenth, twenty-four. The House is awaiting action at the House Agricultural Committee, Subcommittee on Forestry. Therefore, the Cleveland County Commission approves sending a letter to be signed by the county chairman to United States Representative Mike Rogers, asking for his consideration of co-sponsoring HR fifty-thirty in support for its final passage. Second, one minute, Tanya.
Mm-hmm.
Do we need to send this and have them to, uh, maybe double-tame this to the school? They get half the money, right?
Um, do you, so you want like a li-, like a letter?
I'd like for them to have a copy of this to, I'd like for them to co-sponsor this is what I guess I'm saying, since they get half the money.
I got you. So you could.
Ask the, ask the school board to send their own letter.
Yeah.
Yes, that's what I'm asking.
I can send them a copy of the letter though, right?
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Uh, okay. And now we'll go to, uh, B on the consent agenda, the number four on the consent agenda. I'm just gonna read the thing.
I can take it over to people.
Okay, which one? Number four.
Whereas the Cleveland County Engineer requests the Cleveland County Commission authorize surplus of equipment as follows. Total station survey equipment, model number CL zero-one seven-one, asset ID number ten eighty-one, serial number GPS three oh-three, nineteen ninety-seven Ford F seven hundred F series, asset number one nine seven five, VIN number as stated. RJ three fifty bro- 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 asset ID number forty-four sixty-seven, serial number as stated. Equipment trailer asset ID number forty-four seventy-one, VIN number as stated. WD six thirty woods ten-foot rotary cutter, asset number, asset ID number zero zero four three zero eight, serial number as stated. WD six thirty woods ten-foot rotary cutter, asset ID number zero zero four three zero nine, serial number as stated. Seven by sixteen black spare mount, seven thousand pound trailer, asset ID number four four nine three, VIN number as stated. Therefore, the Cleveland County Commission hereby authorizes the surplus of this equipment.
I'm making the motion.
I second.
Any discussion?
I'd like to amend it and take the two trailers off.
Okay.
Later, see you good, Lee.
The equipment trailer, um, could have been, um, right now, Price has got it locked up. Um, it's always been a spare, just in case.
What kind of trailer is it?
It's a twelve-ton, uh, Piddle Beach, pulled behind a dump truck.
Can you put it?
Can you put it? But it's always just been backed up. And it was, it was there when we had the old lowboy trailer. Now that we got the new lowboy, we just haven't, it hasn't moved in.
Okay.
What about the, what about the seven by sixteen?
That is, um, right now it's pretty much just frame. That's old, uh, uh, packs Kobe's.
Oh.
Oh, Kobe's trailer.
Okay.
And, uh, it's just.
What about the broom?
The broom is one of them that's just been a money pit. The broom is one of them, that's just been a money pit, we keep big money into it, right now, the hydro is not working on it, and it won't broom. So one of the faces, we use them up out of the year, and I just sit there and quit having the, quit having the.
I'd like to pull them in.
Okay. Thank you much for the passes is.
You've already got the, Mr. Hendricks, let's go.
All in favor passes, has it in the report? Okay, reports from staff?
Oh, we still have the old case.
Oh, yes, okay.
Well, they've got backwards on here, you can do it on this one.
Do you have any knowledge of this works?
I don't mind.
Do you think there's all this?
Yeah, let's get all that off. So who gets into this other, go all night.
Okay, item A tree brand expansion.
But I just want to read it, I don't think it's going to do, I don't think it's going to happen.
It was read at the last meeting, so it's already been announced publicly, uh, so the old business, item A tree brand expansion, you can just bring it up for motion to second.
Okay, do you have a motion? Okay, item V, new business approval.
This similarly, it was read at the last meeting, um, so it's the same resolution that was brought up at that time, you can just open it for a motion to second.
Do you have a motion out of D on old business? Okay, item D dies for lack of motion. Old business, item C.
Mr. Chairman, this one, Commissioner Truitt, uh, has previously been read at the last meeting, he is making an amendment, and you would need to read the new amended resolution.
The amended resolutions, as states, whereas Commissioner Mark Truitt has expressed concerns about the safety of spraying herbicides, specifically glyphosate for weed control on roadways. Therefore, the Cleveland County Commission agrees to exclude glyphosate from use on roadways.
Make a motion.
Any discussion? Is this here for spraying or just what?
This is the amended.
This is to eliminate the use of chemical glyphosate from all use on roadways, spraying, or application anywhere. Pre-emergent treatment.
Yes, Mr. Hendricks?
What, excuse me, what is the replacement going to cost, the replacement chemical, and is it going to do this good a job?
The, it'll do as good a job, it's about, it's, it's double the price. The mix for, and I ain't quite get it all right from you, but essentially, the, the mix including the glyphosate was around eight thousand to go to the, replacement, it bumped it to about fifteen.
Mr. Truitt? Can we not just say, let's put this together if we're going to vote whether we're going to spray or not? I mean, it's picking out the chemicals or whatever, once you say what it's going to be.
So here's, here's my claim on that, so if Mark's concern is glyphosate, there are alternatives to it. And they are other chemicals with these other sprays, the broadleafs and the duds and grasses and that kind of stuff that are still beneficial. And we can, we can substitute for that one chemical and still have a, a valid spray program that, that does what it's supposed to do. It's just a little more expensive to have.
But you're saying double, do, does that mean double, what was in paying for the whole sheet though?
And additional seven.
Or the additional seven dollars for the pre-emergent, which would be the first.
Okay, okay.
But Lee, if you don't mind, explain to them what we discussed trying, not, not spraying the early spray that has its glyphosate in it, but waiting and using just the broadleaf and the, and the woody brush killer, and leaving the broad spectrum glyphosate and the pre-emergent out of the mix, did I?
You can lay all that out there, suit.
Please do, because we're not talking, what we have gotten down to is not increasing the cost by using the substitute product, but actually taking those products out.
Let me say, let's come up with a program and vote one time, I mean, I don't want to sit here and vote, I mean, I've heard not ten different things that we're going to try to do, because I'm voting up or down. And when it comes to time, I just want to know, when it comes to time to vote to spray or not, that's what I want to vote on. So, yeah, I don't want to argue about that.
Commissioner Owen, the, this is a chemical of concern. And removing it from consideration for use, uh, does not harm whether you choose to go forward with a spraying program or not. But I think this is why Commissioner Truitt has brought this up, is because it is a chemical of concern. And just removing it from our list of chemicals that can be used, doesn't hurt however you decide to go forward with it.
The concern about, um, taking out a broad spectrum killer such as the Roundup is that it will cost more to mow, it will take more time to mow. And what we could discuss trying to do is to go ahead and take that part out completely and see what we get this year by using just the broadleaf and the brush killers. And if you like what you see come November, or, you know, end of the year, then we could possibly stay with that. We also talked about maybe trying to come up with a comprehensive plan that would spell all this out in a lot more detail, and then minimize spray and maximize other means of maintenance. But this is just one step, um, the cost of chemical is concerned.
This is, yeah, this is one chemical, all this is.
Okay.
So motion in a second? Any more discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Motion passes?
Uh, okay.
Okay, that was all on the old business. Reports from staff, county administrator?
Oh, the only thing I really have to report is that, um, we have heard from our examiner's office, and they do expect to start our audit early February, is the date that I have. Normally, I will hear a couple of days before they actually show up, and they'll tell me I'm coming in two days or three days. So I will let you know when they show up. Um, I'm currently working on getting everything ready for Melissa for FY twenty-three. So, and we're pretty far along with that, so I'll see any problems, I'll send that, bring it for her to finish up, and get that ready for when the auditorship finishes, that's why twenty-two.
Any questions?
Yeah.
Mr. Hendricks?
They're going to send out an email because we have to sign off on that, right, on the sheet.
Yeah, they.
We know anything, so that'll, that'll be a notification there, won't it?
Sure, yeah, it's, it's, um, it's not always like, we're maybe the one that they send that out, but yeah, they will send that out pretty early on in the audit process, and send out, do you know anything, right, and that kind of thing, to report.
And you say that you're getting stuff ready for Melissa for the twenty-twenty-three? Have you given her any documents yet for twenty-twenty-three?
I did not.
How, are, are we talking about in the next month, that we have everything ready for?
We're working on the process of it, it just, you know, we're getting it out, I mean, I'm just working on it as I can, and um, I don't know a timeframe on that just yet, but, um, Tracy and I both have been working on it ever since we finished getting twenty-two ready. So, um, it's just putting all the spreadsheets together, getting everything, you know, going back and checking details and matching everything up, and making sure that everything balances. So, I want to get it to the point this time where she doesn't have as much work to do, we're trying to get it further along in the process. But I've been communicating with her, in fact, I've talked to her this week, and I know that she's busy for the next several weeks. She's tied up, doesn't have time to do anything else right now anyway. So, in that time that she's busy is when we're trying to get all that nailed down. I will certainly give you an update when I see that we are close to working with her again. But, um, as we get things balanced out, and I'm sure that there, where she needs them to be, I will pass those on to her.
Okay, because I, you know, I, I thought that we were going, when we talked about this before, we were nearly ready to turn over twenty-three. I thought that that's what you had led us to think, that you were put, put everything together, and we were going to like, be ready for twenty-three.
What we're talking about is being ready for twenty-three, when they, when the auditor's finished for twenty-two, we're hoping that we'll be ready for twenty-three. So, certainly, I do hope that in, you know, coming weeks, that we will finish up everything and have that passed on to Melissa. But, um, we are not ready for twenty-three yet, and Melissa does not have twenty-three much yet. But it wouldn't do her any good right now, she did have it, because she's, she's tied up for the next several weeks, she said. Two, three weeks, she will be busy and will not have time to do anything with it. So, I'm doing everything I can, so when that time comes where she's ready up, then we can pass on what we have and continue from there.
How, how long will this audit take?
It always takes down. It'll probably take them six to eight weeks, it takes a long time to do an audit.
So you're thinking six, eight weeks, how do they start for the rich?
At least to a point where it's close, if not done, and that all depends on our schedules, including not, because my schedule hurts as well. But, um, that, that is developed, just to try to have that done. It also depends on, you know, the auditors, they're not, they're not auditing us, they're back and forth, they don't come and stay every day, or weeks, at least they are in and out, you know, a couple of times a week for, for that time.
They haven't just placed off now one morning, right? You, you been to an audit for the county?
We, we are doing the audit for the county, that's FY twenty-two.
I know, I was trying to say, but you said, I think that's in, you've been through with the whole.
Oh, yeah, I've been through with the whole.
For the county, Cleveland County?
Yes.
Which one was that?
Twenty-one. Now, that's the only one that I've been here for, was the twenty-one audit. So we'll have the twenty-two audit done, and then hopefully be ready for twenty-three, when they get twenty-two done, and start pitching up.
So when you, so when you close out a year, I'm just trying to, that is from my own brain, which is not very good, but, uh, so twenty-two's complete, done, there's really nothing else, it's almost like it's a file sitting there that just needs to be gone through and verified and tweaked, whatever, look for mistakes or whatever, because twenty-two was a bad year. Twenty-three, so it's, it's sitting there in a file collecting dust, in a way, because, I mean, there's nothing coming and going out of twenty-three, it's dead, right? Wrong?
No, we'll still go back and make adjustments, I mean.
That's what I'm saying, but right now, there's no more activity in that file, other than you trying to get it ready for an audit, correct?
That's right, that's right.
So that's what I'm saying.
Who make it, you know, who pay.
Right, that's what I'm saying, so it's sitting there that you can work on as you can, and now Tracy has worked on twenty-two.
Yeah, he and I both have been working on twenty-two, and all that needs to be done now is auditing, we won't make any more changes to twenty-two, there won't be any.
So you've done it over now, right?
It's, well, not turned over, I mean, they haven't looked at it yet, they have not seen it yet, but when they are aware that we're ready, even the notes pages, everything's complete, and all they need to do is walk in and sit down and start the audit. It takes them that much time, because they will have to pump team invoices, pump team different reports in different formats, and that's what takes them a long time to go through all of that. Now FY twenty-three, we're working on things like getting, we have a spreadsheet that's just for fixed assets, we have a spreadsheet that's just for, uh, due to the firm accounts.
Just that twenty-two?
Yes.
Okay, so where I'm going with this, where I'm going with this, we've got twenty-one sitting there dead, twenty-two sitting there dead, twenty-three sitting there dead, twenty-four's got a little bit of a heartbeat. So, and that's where I'm going with this, twenty, you and Tracy and Melissa, when we get to twen, at twenty-three, twenty-four, this here's a cookie cutter, so what I'm saying is, unless there's a big federal money, and I think you had to deal with some money in twenty-three, federal money, right? Okay, so, as we don't have federal money, most time we do, correct? That you have to deal with, it sets up all the different little, making sure we got that money in a lineup, because I think we got gied on that one time, because we didn't have a line item for that federal money, right?
And twenty-two, we not have a federal audit, we almost, we missed it by.
Twenty-three, the twenty-three, okay, so we know about making sure that that money's separate from this one, okay, this, this is things that I don't want to be slapped in the face with, okay.
And that one's going to be a federal, what they call a federal single audit, it's going to be quite as in-depth, because it's, it's become a hard one.
And we have to put extra money in there for it, right?
Yeah, there's, there's a little something for that, but it's, it's not as bad as a full federal audit.
Mr. Hendricks?
When, it, when and if, I guess, they're finding some twenty-two, that's going to affect twenty-three, right?
No, generally, the way, um, the way they handle that is if they find something in twenty-two, and you have other, um, years are already finished, or you, you either can do one of two things, if you're not finished with that by twenty-three, you can actually correct some of those things. But say like, for instance, if they have a problem with your deposit dates, when you proceed to check, and if you waited a week because you're bringing closing to deposit a check, they will actually consider the fact that that was already in the middle of the time they gave you that first note or finding, and they will not count that against you. So, that is not really a problem on their end, they will probably just say, hey, you know, we already told you about this, but just be aware of it.
So there's no advantage to holding twenty-three, we just need to get them done as quickly as we can?
We get them done and make sure that everything looks good, and really, truly, it is not a problem that twenty-two was, because we had our department so much by the time we get into FY twenty-three, and now it's just compiling everything.
Is Tracy working mostly on the financial statements now?
He's working on that, he does do, um, he checks our AP for us, and, um, he does do, uh, a lot of the back reconciliations. He does back reconciliations until he finds any outstanding items, and then he comes to me and we work on those together, find out if there's any issues. Um, but he is working, I mean, that's, that's all he and I have worked on today, is financial stuff, for twenty-three. We're working these together.
Okay, now he will be sitting in on the audits, also, will he not?
Well, I mean, sitting in, sitting in on the audits, nobody actually sits in on audits, they're in the audits, they ask us for information, and we all get involved. We all, whoever is working on, you know, if one of us is working on payroll or AP, then the other one's going to go pull invoices or pull reports. But, uh, I always involve him in anything that I do, especially something new that he has not seen yet. I pull him in and say, I want you to say how, how this is done, and next time you're going to do it. So I'm trying to train him on everything that I do, um, even my process of, you know, if I'm, if I'm looking to reconcile an item that's an old item, I can come in on that, because I want to mention I'm going to do it too, because you know what, I'm going to do something else to get it done, so.
Because he is our natural officer, that is his position to do, and, you know, that's what he, how we hired him as. So that's reason, you know, making sure that he's in all the audit process is very important.
Oh, yes.
And then Melissa should be, when she gets the time, be coming in to train him.
Right, and she's, she's not trying to help us, she's not going to try, she's not trying to help us.
You know, we need him to be working with him, because some of the, because he is our natural officer. We need for him to be trained.
And I need to be trained, I never was trained, I never had anybody to train me, because.
She's in heaven, he.
I've learned a lot from her, but not, she's never given me like, overviews or anything, she has helped me when I've had a question, I called her about a question last week, um, and just talked to her on our way in at work. But she's helped me in that way, but she's never trained me, so certainly, if she's training Tracy, it only makes sense that we would both sit in and learn this information, and it may be that she's teaching him about something that I'm fully aware of, and I can walk away and just work on something else for a while, and come back, but if she's teaching him about something that I have, have not ever had any training on, I'm certainly going to listen in on, on what that is. If we both have something to learn from her, that we're getting more back up on that, if we're both learning. And it may be that she starts talking about something that really counts payable, and I pull up my finance clerk and run from it, so I pull my finance clerk down, working with the finance officer, and two of them are learning from her. So it's just going to be about whatever subject she has to be covering, that's going to be a judgment.
She's just going to be able to do it on the Saturday, so it's going to be a limit to.
Yeah, and I understand that, but she did tell me that she had two, three weeks, that she's going to be pretty, pretty tied up, but then she was working on the schedule with me, because that's. but then she was working on schedule with me, because that did happen after we got our last meeting out. I hit her up and I said, hey, you know, I heard you might be able to help us out a little bit, and she said, why else, it's gonna be a few weeks, but, yeah.
What are you talking about today, do you feel like you might need her to yourself? You know, what we talked about today in your office? Might wanna reach out to her sometime if you need her.
True. Did you find out anything about the order?
Um, it, I've actually spoken to Mr. Odom about it, and looked back through, read back through the information that I had sent you all before, and it looks to both of us that it cannot be done without legislation.
Okay.
It has to.
And that was all Mr. Sten agenda? Tasked to be administrator to gather the information, put together.
It was, but I, but I had already had the information pretty well gathered, so I basically just sent that over to our county attorney, and I've actually spoken to Adam about it too, so he was kind of aware where I was, where I was on it.
Were you able to find out when that raise went into effect, the last one?
The last one that I saw, which was on the legislation, was two thousand and seven. I thought there might have been one more recent than that, but I did not see it being more recent than that.
I believe twenty sixteen, Terry, you were here twenty sixteen, wasn't that about?
There's been a raise since fourteen, because I, I've been in office since fourteen. I don't know, I've been done it, I can't remember.
There ain't been a raise since two thousand and seven.
What happened in two thousand and sixteen was when the, that's when they came in and took away, y'all had to vote to put back the vehicle, all the supplies, all of that stuff. That's what happened in two thousand and sixteen, there were no raises, went in there. Two thousand and seven was the last raise.
The county came in to do that, came in to provide a vehicle, and provide a computer, and provided a camera.
And when twenty sixteen, when we got clarification of all?
That was what I understand.
Yes.
That's what had happened on that.
That's what was done in twenty sixteen.
Well, you've been off, so.
I took in two, we nineteen, so that's when Ben, Ben resigned when all of that came up, when they, when all of that had to go away, that's when he resigned, and Tracy was appointed for two years.
Yeah, I think.
And I took.
Sixty-six years old, my memory ain't too good, but I thought when Rudy was calling, we gave a raise.
I remember, um.
Rudy was calling in two thousand and seven.
Yeah.
Well, how do, how do we proceed then, if we're, we're convinced it's gotta go through the legislature? Does it need to go through the same process that the other raises are? Okay.
A resolution sent over to our local legislators and let them, you know, and tear it up and rebuild it the way they want?
We basically got that, that funded. Okay, well, yeah, that's already planned.
She's, she's passed, now the county administrator puts that paperwork in.
Do you think that's for her?
Um, I was gonna talk to the sheriff, sheriff right here, so.
Flash here. Flash here.
Yeah, he, he can answer what I'm. Last month, I signed, or last week, I signed thirty thousand dollars of maintenance for the car.
Okay.
I don't think he's got any maintenance money left, could you, could you verify all that for our next work session?
I looked before I came in, and what it looked like, unless there's something that's not posted yet. I did not see anything, and I did kinda look quickly. It looks like they're right at forty-two, eight, forty-two thousand eight hundred for this year, and that's just, it's October first, and that is, um.
How much was the budget?
The budget was fifty thousand.
So there's seven, seven thousand left?
Yeah, I mean, there, there are transitions where you can be under budget, basically.
Okay. Can you, can I keep going?
Yeah.
Uh, can you reach out to the sheriff and see if he, he can get a copy of the contract that I've heard has been modified on the maintenance bid? I would definitely like to see a copy of it.
What happened is I, I'm sorry. What happened is last week, I actually got an email from John asking if they, if the sheriff could write, write a new contract and send it over to the county attorney. And I said, well, certainly you can do that, but we need to see that here for the commission first. The commission needs to, to look at that. So I asked him to send it to me first, so I think it was the next day, Patrick sent me an email and said, you know, this is what we're considering for the sheriff's department, but there was no attachment. So I sent a message back and said, hey, did you mean to attach something to that? And that was the last I heard of it, but that was like Friday last week, so as of today, I had not gotten it.
Now, we got it.
No, but I did tell them that I had been tasked to, to look into this and run a new contract that we were, he also asked, well, which was by July, because the contract ends in September. And he asked if we had already sent a letter, cancel the contract, and I said, oh, no, we haven't done that yet. We have not got that far, we don't want to cancel our contract right now, because we still need that contract until we can get to something else going.
Can, can you reach out to the sheriff then, and remind the sheriff, sheriff, that only the commission can do the contract, am I correct? And that any changes he wants to make, he's gotta go through the commission, and we would like to be involved in this. It, it saves a whole lot of time and a whole lot of hurt feelings.
Well, I almost said, hey, you know, this is between, those contracts between the commission and the vendor, but I took a step back and said, what I need is for you to send that to me before it goes to anyone else, so that we can look at it a lot again.
Can you reach out to the sheriff?
I will, I can do that.
Well, I think, the, if you think about it, in the past, let's say, three years, we've added a lot more people and a lot more vehicles. I think everyone, the SRO officers has a vehicle, and, you know, all vehicles have been purchased through that, so naturally it's gonna go up, but.
Part of those shits were upped in some four and five-year-old cars.
I know.
I don't understand why we're upping four and five-year-old cars, especially when we're fixing to get some new car. I mean, that's a lot of money, but anyway. That's all I got.
Is there any way to do this legally with a bid, where there could be more than one vendor for maintenance?
Certainly. It just has to be bid appropriately.
Well, the problem you have, you've got such a closed window, you know, one of the things I suggested with all these other vehicles we got coming in, is to have a vehicle sitting there that the deputy's having issues, or his car needs to be serviced, but it's almost like these cars turn into their house, where they can't, they cannot get out of a seat other than to have the oil changed. It's the way I understand it. But, you know, you gotta widen your variety, you gotta get into Oxford, where you might go into somebody, you know, to do some of the, because I talked to a couple of vendors down there, you know, back when they started first time, but the word is, is nobody, the deputies doesn't have the time, but I figured, as I said, maybe if the vehicle was positioned to where they could take another vehicle and take that vehicle, you just have it like in a rotating cycle, that these vehicles are taken and serviced, you know, instead of our deputy's having responsibility, and I really ain't figured it out enough to figure it out now. That's something you probably get into with it.
I mean, I speak for me, and I don't speak for everybody, but if you could just come up with, with what's going on and invite the sheriff to our work session, and then maybe we can discuss all of it.
Yeah.
Is there. I will, I'll speak on behalf of the sheriff, the sheriff has a conference, so that's why he's not here. And as far as the contract, I mean, he's trying to work with our vendors here, because we all, we all wanna keep it in Cleveland. I mean, that's, that's the whole goal of it, and I understand that.
You, you need to stop, you need to stop our attorney before you start saying some of that stuff, because some of that stuff's on that. I mean, I, I don't want you getting thrown.
No, I get that, what I'm, what I'm saying is, is.
Yeah.
The sheriff is in conference, and he may, whatever, whatever.
Yeah, well, he just, we just, we just need to reach out and ask him to come, let's have a talk, kind of a contract.
I think there may be some things in the current contract that need to be clarified.
Yeah, potentially, but if you give that priority.
Yeah, I mean, we, we've already tasked our administrator to do it, so the sheriff and administrator need to get together and present us something, you know?
Absolutely, it does no good to have just the sheriff on board with something, or just us on board. We've got that, we're the sheriff and the commission, and kind of the third one to, to deal with that.
Can I get a copy of the current bid or contract?
I can get you a copy of it.
Send me a copy of it too. Send us all a copy. Yes, there's one thing to check out.
The latter two? I just looked at it like.
Will you highlight that, the one thing that's on there, for her to tell her, highlight it, and I sure wouldn't go straight to that? Okay.
I'd love a real question for what's that just about? Have we got a amount on offshore money yet?
Yes, the offshore money is, that's the Alabama trust fund money. We receive that every year in April, it's usually between two hundred and forty and two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That is the money that we have been paying our bond off with, but that bond is paid off now. So that was the jail bond. So what we're sitting on right now is right at two hundred and fifty thousand, that's a little better, I mean, that's two fifty, two thirty, something like that. So that's what we're sitting on right now, and we're about to receive another similar payment in April. So we're a couple of weeks ahead of getting that. Usually April fifteenth is about, about when we get it. Uh, that money is for buildings, it can be, up to half of it can be used on roads and bridges. Uh, it can be used for buildings, it can be used to purchase land to put county buildings on, but that's kind of the limitation on it.
Mark? When do you expect the fireworks tax to be settled up for this season? Probably by next month?
When you mean settle up for the season, like already save all the money?
They pretty much just sell it the New Year, and then they, they're pretty much done at that.
We should get, we should get pretty much everything by end of February, I'd say, because everything we're receiving in February is for January, so that's gonna be right up the lines with, yes.
Fire departments shouldn't know when, by end of February.
Yes, and Avenue's doing a report, so they should send them straight on their payment. There shouldn't be a delay or anything on that, so.
Anything else for her? Uh, mine is sort of, probably it's gonna be dealing with the area where they bring this up? Yes. Okay. You know, talking about that offshore money, and what needs to be done, as far as talking about the jail. The thing that we went over the list that the sheriff's department did the other day was about sixty-six thousand, and then the fixing that leak on the front of the roof that we got a proposal for, that come back, about fifteen thousand, that's to sheet them, all of that metal and build that wall in the front, and at that front little entry where the windows are. Also, what I was, what, trying to get this list together, where are we at with the heating in the front side of the jail?
We're good.
We're good, okay, so those, so those numbers comes to about eighty-one thousand dollars. So that offshore money, we've been dealing with that damn leak ever since I've been in office. So if they think this will fix it, then I'm all for that. And those doors that are falling off the hinges, the only thing that I see that the commission can get by with, but I just assume, since we're having all the doors done, I mean, all the doors in the back, let's just go ahead and knock out the other two, and the doors will be off our list. So that would get the, all the doors done, and then that would get their leak fixed, and that would be eighty-one thousand. If y'all would have to take some of that money to do that, go ahead there.
Uh, is that what you're going to beat it up?
Well, I'm, I mean, those are different ones.
I, I mean, well, that was one of my questions to Jason.
It's different companies for different projects, really. Yeah, well, let me say this, I think there's only, dealing with jails, it ain't like you, I mean, we're, I mean, you could put it out there, advertise on.
A few companies that were.
Yeah, on the doors, you know, on the roof, that's a separate bid. If I'm not mistaken, I believe the doors might be considered as emergency safety issue. They're falling off the hinges.
Yeah, I haven't seen any of that, so.
I don't want to just break it up into three, three different projects, can we didn't do that?
Let's see, you can do.
Because it is.
Different contractors.
No, it ain't three different contractors, now, I wouldn't do that, but just send a bid if we're gonna do that. We gotta have the door closers, and the hinges, the special hinges that gotta be put on. The only thing you could really separate would be doing the, is forty thousand too much?
Be forty, thirty, that'd be bid.
It's mostly bid, I mean, just, just to do the doors in the back is forty thousand. I mean, I'd rather, let's hear something, these one person and, and to try to piece, I mean, try to break it up can be a little tough, because they're gonna wanna put them doors out there and run them, because they're all different. I mean, you go, this door at this jail was built twenty years ago, the doors and the pattern might be totally different. You know, what they got on the table now, where they gonna have to build each door.
So, so the doors is the only thing that you're gonna have to beat it out.
Go ahead, Terry.
Always, uh, so if that's the case, why don't you just get with, with the sheriff's department and with maintenance, and work us up a big, work us up something to send that to bid?
Okay, but we go ahead and accept the fifteen thousand, right, on the, on the front of the building, get that out of our way. Because, yeah, the roof, that's not, that's. I'll give you the thing for next month, I mean, I would like to go ahead and take that fifteen thousand and put it, have it, put on the, add it to the commission tonight to approve that fifteen thousand, get that roof done. I'd like to get something done.
And we would also have to adjust the maintenance budgets, that what that's coming out of, coming out of the jail.
It come out of jail, it come out of the general funds where it's coming from.
Yeah, but we'll have to amend the budget to put that money in.
Okay, well, that's good.
So you'll need two resolutions, right?
So you want a resolution to repair the roof with the fifteen thousand, and you want another resolution to take fifteen thousand out of the capital improvement fund to.
Whatever that is, that's the offshore, offshore money.
Trust fund.
Capital improvement funds, what we call it.
Then next month I'll have, we'll, we'll get this bid out. Mr. Hendricks?
Okay, this is a question for you, are you gonna do it whatever every week, or are you gonna jaze night to the maintenance? If you did, we ain't got no one, since we've talked about this a couple of months ago.
Yeah, was that weekly or monthly, if they done that?
I was thinking, I thought it was weekly, but.
Yeah, I'm thinking it's monthly, but.
But whatever, I'm just asking a question.
Yeah, and, and I, before I, I ended up with a form.
That we've only got the one report on the jail, so I was just wondering if Lane was gonna do it himself, or is he still?
Yeah, if I've got time, I'll do it, if not, you know, I'll tell Fred to.
But we need to, you're Fred's supervisor, and we need to remind Fred then that we need one every month.
Yeah, I, I designed that form for him before I left, so you can have something to go by. And also, I'd like to schedule a work session where we may, it ain't, I like, I like the commission to get back on program, all of us, at least once a year, walk through that jail. I think the jail's looking pretty good, other than the two things we're talking about, the plywood off the doors, and the doors fall off the hinges, I'll have to get that done. But the rest of the jail looks pretty good, I have to say.
That's a full fix.
We could, could we do that at a work session?
Yes.
So we could do that at our morning work session?
Yeah, I thought I was planning this here and that.
I'm timing that.
So what are we adding this?
We're adding fifteen thousand. We need to add this to the agenda tonight for.
If he wants to test tonight, if Jason will write us a resume.
He knows what's coming.
You like to go, yeah, and then see that, there's no going.
Well, that ain't, here's a one on that, I have to print it out, here you go.
There's, there's no one out there, you wanna take me on, you know?
All.
Well, I think something, I guess we're gonna, they gonna do it, we can get this put together, and we'll just do it next one.
Eat what you do.
Ain't like they gonna get that, that, put that roof on right now, anyway. Yeah, I just print that and go Lisa, that endorsement that she just put a resolution to get on it, because it's on the fifteenth. Me and Clay get together on advertising and other. Ben, we got the specs, put it in this guy.
Yeah, y'all can.
Throw a hand after you business.
Twelve days from now, we can work with it.
It'll, it'll break out at work.
What's the frame of work session?
It's okay. Lee?
Just a few road dates, right quick, so the road access is gonna start for February, February, for the year. Um, so those seven trust bridges, there'll be limited access on those, takes basically a day per trust. Just in case y'all wanna get popped off, y'all know what's going on. So that'll be the annual inspection for those. I am supposed to be taking, I don't know the date, supposed to be taking delivery on the two new dump trucks sometime in February, so you'll see that in and out with surplus of the two that we have, and, and bringing the two new Zenas to be sold in March.
What two dump trucks?
The two dump trucks that have a rotation.
I know, but I thought we, we downsized to one, and you got two smaller dump trucks.
I've got two big ones, we did there for about a year, but that, but we went back to, went back to two, two max, and I'm rotating them out of Kenworth now.
Okay, and they're all max?
And they're all max.
Kenworth, I'm saying, bid program, yeah.
Yeah, it's awesome.
Is the motor, is some motor grinders on the rotate too?
Motor grinders on rotation, they'll be next to front.
Okay.
Um, but just...
So, so with, so the motor grinders, uh, I know they're in good shape. How are we coming out on, this will be the first time you've sold the motor grader, right?
Yeah, they're, 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 no, we actually done, we done it once before.
How good are we coming out on?
Same, we're doing it. We, uh, we come out on top, sell them and, and get the two new ones, so...
How many motor graders we got now, two or...
Two, we've got two.
You didn't eat none of them, I was young.
Yeah, we had all those.
And there's the George pick, right?
Uh, the, the new ones. Yes, there's George. Um, so the trucks, you'll see that in and out in, in February. And then the issue that I had come up, the sign truck, um, we got started doing our sign certification for a year and it looks like transmission went out on that sign truck.
How long does that sign truck?
Um...
So?
It's old.
I mean, how do you keep living, because every time you, I see it run, you pull away with like a gallon of fluid on the front.
But we've been keeping it up, so that's kind of what I'm getting at. If the transmission is gone, and I'm giving an estimate right now, this, I'm going to say it's worth more than the trucks.
Oh, yeah.
But I just don't know what we're going to, I don't have a good plan on that just yet, so I was going to get that back and see what it was.
Do you have a truck that you don't use ever now?
We, not really, I mean, we're making it work right now, but, you know, that sign truck's got a, got the hydraulic camera on it, it's got a post pulser, it's got all the tools on it.
Got a PTO.
Yep, and right now we're making it work, but we don't have those.
What about the rodeo years you talked to, was it Shepherd County? About? Yes, Shepherd County. You think we could reach out to him and see if they might have something in the yard we could get? What about him, Mark, or... Ken.
He spoke.
Yeah.
He was not commissioner, he was a speaker at the first.
He was the county minister. And said anything they had, all he had to do was ask, is it Shepherd County? Shepherd County Minister? Well, yeah, we'll get his number. If they're about to get rid of it, or, yeah.
I, I did go, I did go and search for the state surplus that night, there was nothing on, on there, but the state just had a big auction.
Do you need the bid not, or you just need a truck?
Um, I need the budget, I need the truck, the budget.
Yeah.
Now, the bid that we've got, the one we've got, it's got storage for posting signs and all that stuff's handy, but is that a gap to, I mean, we make it work there?
I'll tell you, it, it'd be nice if we could get one with a good, it would, I mean, it went at least thirty feet. Because Fred uses, we use the cities most of the time, it'd be good that the county goes, like, if you see something where he could go down or something's in the air, right away, they could go down there and knock it off right quick, like, where it's cracked, and they could go ahead and cut it off. I think, I think the county needs to invest one that will at least go thirty to forty feet. And that there, that, that's that regular, what, three ton?
That's it, yeah.
Yeah, like the cities got, and then that's the sweetest thing ever to have, that thing y'all got. It's like a two horse wagon.
Yeah, but that, that is, that's right now is the biggest issue, because I need to be doing sign, I mean, like I said, we're doing them, but I need to be doing signs next now, so...
Yeah, I think, I mean, you talked about this one time before, but I don't remember what the answer was. Is it legal to vote and post to get it?
It is.
I mean...
It is, I know you don't like it, but it is.
Well, I don't like it at all.
But, yeah, there's, that's why it is.
I've got a quick question.
Okay.
Transportation plans posted on the website, is that just federal and state special money or without?
It is the state, that's the gas tax money, that's the rebuilt Alabama.
Rebuilt Alabama and federal, anything coming?
State, county minister.
So, do we have anywhere that you post other jobs you're planning on doing that are not part of that?
We don't, um, I'm required to post those because it's the, it's the gas tax money, the stuff we try to do in-house. No, I don't post it anywhere.
Yeah, that's probably...
Because those points change and, of what we've got and what we can do and somehow I don't...
That's probably one of the things you could post on your part with a new website, what's happening in your district.
So we could, we could add some things at that point, but it would all be tentative, I mean, we've got to spell that out.
It would all be tentative, that's my thing.
Do you have a tentative on twelve, I know you said summer, you know, about what month that might be?
Um, so we're going to get started doing all of it, it'll probably be in June, early July.
Close enough.
If everything goes, like it needs to. That's, that's...
I got, I have a disclaimer really, honestly.
I have to say, that's why I don't post it, is because it does come with a disclaimer.
Any other questions for Lee? Do you have your attendance for that last meeting, because it will have the speaker's name? I think I've got it. Send that to me, I'd like to sit down, I'm not, I'm not good, I look, my daughter lives there, so I'm not going down. We've been down there a few times to there, that's where they had their meetings a couple of times, their district meetings. I've got it in my head, I can't just picture him. So we'll get it, we'll get, I want to go make one. Mark?
Hey, I have another question. We could probably talk about it after the meeting, but, uh, they have a meeting the thirtieth that Jennifer... The meeting's not above water, she is, but what do you think about less press for meeting and turn up water shields?
Yeah, really.
It's a, it's a, what is it, what do they call them, the comedians?
Asian water.
Huh?
Asian water games.
Do you want to go?
We just have some, that's, we just have a...
The bridge there.
We just have some, is that the one you're talking about?
You send that to, that's on the town.
Stuff in our trailer.
We all got, we all got...
In all, in all states, it's just...
And I'm talking to a guy down there, speaking.
Water shield.
Down there in Old Castle, you know? Anything else? I'd like to push one there.
We do have, meet at Phil Terry, if you don't mind, uh, we scheduled, uh, ACC county meeting for March the eighteenth.
Yes.
For our ACCA.
Yes, it's like...
Just made it to get Terry, because he wasn't at the meeting that night. More state training.
That's kind of good chicken.
We also have an ACAA, where you come meeting, February the seventh, I forgot to tell you all, but nobody usually goes to that but me. But it's going to be in Gadsden.
What is it?
It's ACAA meeting, you know, how, they're the county administrators. They, they basically just have, have, from my experience, it's a good one, it's usually just approved by county administrators, ten to twelve. County administrators sit around and talk about any questions that we have, and I think Laura Hodge will be there, Kelly Delica may be there.
What's maybe?
It is, and we're the seventh from ten to twelve, and they usually get a lunch after work, they just skip out and come back to work, but it's ten to twelve. It will be in, at the, I believe it's in the courthouse in Gadsden.
Okay, you got a motion there, Jerry, or a second?
Second.
All in favor?
I have.
For Jerry.
Your first one.